Already doing a pledge of allegiance and John doing the prayer. I had a little trouble printing the agenda actually off of clerk.
John doing.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, you are live.
Meeting call to order today is Tuesday, October 6th. It's now seven oh five PM, town council meeting via Zoom.
Doing a pledge?
Nope, John.
Yes.
We have some prayer, John.
Sure. Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we pray for your presence this evening. Bless us with your Holy Spirit. Remind us all to be patient, thoughtful, and caring when we make decisions and that we are mindful of those we have been chosen to serve. And finally, Father, we ask that you watch over the great town and her many great citizens. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Jay, we lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Luchardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Gosman?
Yeah.
There is a quorum. Discussion, action. Vote of town council, any matter on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of discussion, topic discussion and action by the town council with the vote on the records to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda items. Discussion regarding actions and planning pertaining to addressing COVID-19 virus and the impact on town operations.
Yes. Yes, good evening. Really, this report is somewhat of a somber report, somber report to discuss in the beginning. As we all know, there's been a resurgence of COVID-19 cases throughout the nation and certainly the state of Rhode Island. Today, the Rhode Island Department of Health reported four additional coronavirus deaths and one hundred and seventy-seven additional positive COVID-19 cases. So again, you know, it's said often, but it certainly needs to be said again. You know, there's certain precautions we all can take, you know, by wearing masks and practicing social distancing and, and what our parents taught us early on, you know, wash your hands often and then use sanitizer when you can't wash your hands. Those items, those things will help prevent the spread of COVID-19, which unfortunately will be here with us for some time longer. So I wanted to discuss two agencies that you are affiliated with the town, but, but independent, the library and the senior center. The library, certainly libraries are a very important part of any community. They provide services to the entire specter gamut of all residences. Those who want to go in and check out books, read newspapers, take out audio books. And today it's, you know, the online, I mean, the like podcast audio books that you can listen through your various devices, car, phone. But so libraries are critical to the well-being of every community. And I think, you know, we're fortunate to have a very good library here in the town of West Ward. Currently it is open forty-eight hours a week. It's down from the maximum ideal capacity, the norm of fifty-six hours, but they are open. They offer curbside pickup for books and materials for those who choose to do that as an added service. They also have by appointment access to their computer facilities. Clearly, that's an important program for those residents who don't have access to a computer. And as you can imagine, the safety protocols are necessary for those who use computers. After that, the sanitizing them certainly is a feat. And again, the library is conforming to all the appropriate safeguards and sanitation regulations that they are required to do. And I also, I believe, the library's director, Colin McCaw, may be online if anyone has any questions of him. Or if Colin has anything to mention to the council about what's happening at the library and what he may be doing that I did not mention.
Thanks, Ernie. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So as Ernie mentioned, we are open currently about eighty percent of our normal hours. As you all know, we're governed by the Office of Library and Information Services, the state office. They've asked every library in the state to kind of step up in terms of the number of hours that are open since there was so much diversity. Some libraries were being swamped because neighboring libraries were closed or open very limited hours. We were actually pretty much in compliance with that. They instituted that requirement. So, so as of now, we're open eighty, about eighty percent of our normal hours. We're obviously not providing all the services we would normally provide. Face-to-face programming is, is on hiatus for, for obvious reasons. But we've been successful in taking a lot of that programming online, not just for our younger patrons, but also one very popular feature we had at the library was Senior Tech Club, which frankly is as much of a social hour for seniors. And that's migrated online very successfully. It's interesting that, you know, one, maybe one positive thing that will come out of this pandemic is that everybody is getting acquainted with new technologies, kind of regardless of age group. So, and as Ernie mentioned, we're still offering curbside pickup because there is a portion of our users who are still nervous about going into any kind of a public building. So we're offering that service. We are also offering computer access, but it's now by appointment. So basically, folks can avail themselves of kind of any walk-in services as far as our computers are concerned. It's strictly by appointment so that we can make sure everything is clean and sanitized before the next person uses that machine. But I would say, you know, given the circumstances, we're moving forward in a positive direction. We have a big Halloween event planned, which is mostly going to be outdoors a couple of weeks from now, which we're, we're promoting. You, you may have seen in the Kent County Daily Times, we recently published a, an anthology of writing by West Warwick teenagers. Quite an unusual thing for a library to be engaged in. But we actually got, two of our librarians here got a grant from OLS in order to be able to do this. So it turned out very well. Obviously, the kids are thrilled to be published. One of them has just got an internship on the basis of being published in that anthology with a literary agency, which is something we weren't particularly anticipating. So, so we're trying, we're trying to do what we can in the current circumstances to be as creative and as innovative as we can in providing typical library services where we can and offering new ones or amended ones where we can't. So if anyone has, has questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any question?
The, the Halloween party that you're having, you say it's mostly outside, so is it weather dependent?
It is weather dependent. We've got, so it's on Friday, October 30th. We've got a rain date. Obviously, if both dates were, if we were unfortunate enough that both days were, were rained out, then unfortunately the event would be canceled. But we're obviously hoping for good weather. I, I mean, we see it as an opportunity to do something positive for, for kids who might not, or their parents may not feel comfortable in having them trick or treat in the conventional way. So there's going to be, we're going to be giving out candy. There's going to be a pumpkin carving competition, a costume competition, that, that kind of thing. So we're hoping we'll get a good turnout for that.
And did the event and the specifics of the event have to be vetted with the state?
I think we're, I think we're within all the, all the state protocols. As I said, we're, you know, we're, we're cognizant of working within the Department of Health guidelines. And also OLS, the state office, the state library office is, is very on the ball in terms of providing guidance as to what we should and shouldn't be doing. I mean, one of the reasons why we're, we're obviously not having indoor programming is, as a, as a practical matter. It's just, you know, it's just not advisable at the moment. So, so actually, the, the whole Halloween event will be outdoors, which gives us a little more, a little more flexibility in terms of the numbers of folks who can participate. But even then, it's going to be well-staffed. So there'll be controls in terms of making sure that social distancing is maintained, that folks are, that folks are behaving in a, in an appropriate way.
And have you worked with Chief Ferron at all on this or just with the State Library Association?
Yeah, we, we haven't approached Chief Ferron. So, I, I mean, it's a little, because it's not the kind of thing we typically do. It's a little hard for us to gauge what the turnout is going to be. So we're, we're relying on kind of interest shown in our social media platforms, that kind of thing. So on the one hand, we're hoping for a good turnout. On the other hand, we're hoping we're not completely overrun.
And, and what will happen if you, I, and I'm thinking that too. I think you're right. People are looking for alternative to celebrate Halloween. And, and how are you going to control, are you going to turn people away?
Well, we, we actually had a meeting. We had a meeting yesterday with the Holy Ghost Society, who also have an event the same evening and we're, we're kind of cross-promoting those. And there's a little bit of overlap. Ours is a little earlier in the afternoon and evening. Theirs is a little later. So we're hoping that between us, there'll be no children going home disappointed. The idea is kids come to our event and then move on to their event. So as I said, we're working with that group in town. So in, in a way, we're kind of, we have, we have each other's capacity. So, so hopefully it'll work out.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Colin.
Colin.
Hey, Jason.
Hi. I know last, the last three years I ran the Halloween party at the civic center on behalf of the town and the council. And we've gotten anywhere from seventy-five children to one hundred and twenty-five children. With one or two adults, usually say one and a half adults. So at, at times we had maybe three hundred people.
Right.
Mostly young kids, anywhere from babies to, I would say, maybe ten years old. And we usually, we typically do it the Saturday before Halloween. Which I know Halloween is Saturday this year, but but, but those may be some of the numbers that you could expect.
Yeah, that, that's, that's good to know. And it's sort of, it's in the
Maybe more.
Yes, it's in the ballpark of what we're expecting. We've had, when we look at Facebook, I mean, and, and, you know, in terms of how much you can gauge from this, in terms of folks who say they're interested, and most of those folks will be adults, we're right around about a hundred now. So it, so you presume that each one of those adults is going to come with one or more children. So so that, yeah, that sounds, I mean, it sounds similar. So, so as I said, the, you know, the, the, the plus side by working with another group in town is that there are two events to go to. So, you know, if the crowd, if the crowd isn't huge, the kids are going to end up with a lot of candy. And if the crowds are larger, then hopefully between the, between the two events, you know, everybody will, will have a good time on the evening.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colin.
Thanks, Dave.
The West Warwick Senior Center is still close to the public, but it is, it is functioning. Five to seven employees are there Monday through Friday, from May 3rd to 4th. Three or four of those employees are involved in preparation and distribution of meals to older adults. Meals are delivered by the center staff. The center is also the distribution center for the Meals on Wheels program. And they are providing their services remotely. You know, they're still answering questions that anyone has about housing, Medicare, Social Security, or any other issue that an older adult may have. And again, they are the human services component for the town of West Ward, assisting those in need of assistance, whether it be financial assistance, emergency assistance, emergency food assistance. They are there and they are responsive to those individuals who need that assistance. So they are operating, performing their basic services, of course. You know, the clientele that they serve certainly cannot be in locations and groups. So as of now, they remain closed, but they have their plans ready and available for when the state Department of Health gives a plan to reopen centers pie, uh, piecemeal as they will. And one final item I'd like to mention, which I'd be remiss if I, I did not mention that our town clerk, Mary Ann Kelly, applied for a grant and received sixteen, received a sixteen thousand dollar grant for the planning and operating of a safe and secure election. So just wanted to recognize Mary Ann for that initiative to apply for a grant and that we were fortunate to receive it. And certainly that is going to be helpful as there, there is additional expenses to the elections with the sanitation requirements that are necessary for a, a, a safe election. So just wanted to mention that. And that concludes my prepared remarks. And I'd be happy to answer any question that I can. And Chief Ferron, I believe, is on the line to answer any question as well.
First of all, good job, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Ernie, I do have one, just are the parks back open? Any, any park that, I know that we're working on one, but some questions. I mean, yeah, the playgrounds. Are, are they back open? Because we've had some residents ask about swings and whatever. And I'm just wondering where we stand with that.
Well, I, I would refer to specific playgrounds to the director. But, you know, you know, when you go by, people are using them, you know? So, you know, they're being used. The swings I'm not sure about, so I will defer that to the director.
Don?
We have not put the swings back up. And we've basically kept them closed. We still have signs up that says they're closed. Factory Street and River Point are clearly closed. But other than that, people have been using them. And I know we were working with the fire chief, Jeff, to put some sanitizer out there. And quite honestly, I've lost track on where we were, were on that. I know we constructed some things, but maybe Jeff can answer that as well.
Yeah, so, um, you know, part of the problem was getting the sanitation out to the, the playgrounds. So having a system to be able to disinfect the playgrounds on a regular basis. I know DPW did hire a few more people and hopefully that is going to be able to do. But to just open them up without having a structured plan in place to be able to do that, I think was appropriate.
All right, because I know specifically, and I know some of us received an email from a Mr. Mazur, who lives in one, frequents the native park. He assumes that park is open because there's nothing stating it's closed there. Though he was asking about the swing. So what are your thoughts about putting swings back up, Chief?
Um, if we, as long as we can disinfect them a few times a week. And we do, we did give in of the dispensers to, to provide disinfect, so the hand sanitizer. So we would be able to get those out. So if Don can have people, you know, schedule, you know, a couple of times a week, that we could do that, then that would, would suffice for me.
We could turn around and make that part of our sequence now. We're beginning to wind down on the athletic fields and we've actually caught up on just about all of them. So I can start working that in and we can put the swings back up probably the end of this week.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions for Ernie? Thank you, Ernie.
Financial update of expenses and revenues for period ending September twenty twenty.
Good evening, Kristen.
Hello. So current year tax collections for the first quarter are at nineteen million, seven twenty-two, eight seventy-six, which is thirty, thirty point two-three percent of the budget for the current year. And that's normal because a lot of people like to pay, many people pay the first, the full amount, the, the first quarter. Prior year tax collections are down now to eighty thousand, nine ten because we just took out the sixty-day accrual for fiscal year twenty, which amounted to eight hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. So that's got all recorded back to fiscal year twenty. Overall, revenues are trending up just a smidge below where we would expect them to be. But that's not bad considering the motor vehicle bills did not go out till the last week in September. And I also, we don't normally record the departmental revenues to the middle of the following month. So those aren't included in there either. So as far as I'm concerned, we really are trending on target for revenues. Expenditures are trending under budget by almost six percent. The civic center is in a surplus position. They've expended eighty-eight thousand, eight seventy-three, fifty-two, and they've generated a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents in revenue for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-one. The general fund is also in a surplus position. And a lot of this is because we're still trying to fill a lot of those vacant positions. The auditors have come in this week. They started field work yesterday, so I've been working closely with them to keep the audit moving. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Kristen?
Actually, Kristen, the, the thirty point two-three collections year to date, how does that compare, how does that compare to previous years?
I'm, I'm, it's pretty on target. That's, that's pretty on target for, for previous years. I haven't seen a dip in collections yet with COVID.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing. It is a good thing. And, and when I tell you the traffic outside my window is, is crazy. They are coming like crazy to drop off their checks in the box. So it's a lot of foot traffic.
The other, the other question I, I had was the EMA, obviously over budget a great deal, but many, much of that money we will get back, is that true?
Yeah, so that's the COVID, the COVID expenses. I tried to, I tried to get everyone to start capturing it in one spot. So that'll help us when we have to do our reimbursement.
Okay, and nothing else there alarms you? I mean, border canvases is a little high, but it's the timing of the year. It's all front-loaded.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, no, nothing really, nothing concerns me at all at, at this point in the game.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristen.
No problem.
Minutes of the previous meeting resolved at the minutes of the September one, twenty twenty town council meeting and September nine, twenty twenty executive session are hereby accepted.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Consent agendas, license applications resolved at the consent agenda having been posted. All matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the license applications.
A second.
I'm, I'm going to recuse myself.
I'm also going to recuse myself.
We have two recusals, Councilman Messier and Councilman D'Amico.
Is there a second?
Yes, I had a second from Councilman.
I have a question on one of them.
Yes.
I can't seem to open up my, I have the agenda. I, I, right now I can't open up the attachments. On item number three, central cannabinoids? It's on Pulaski Street. What, um, any info on this?
Trying to open up, Jay.
Pulaski Street. Owner's name Joshua Jordan, Pulaski Street. Describe purpose, proposed business use ingredient sales via online brokerage slash, I'm not sure what that word is. Brokering services, online sales, dropshipping of ingredients for food slash beverage manufacturers.
Oh, okay. We actually lost Mary Beth.
I'm sorry?
Somebody was talking, but I didn't hear. It was like mumbling. I don't know. Maybe it wasn't you. All right, Councilman, are you all set with that? Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah, thank, thanks.
All right, any other comment? Any public comment on the licenses? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifteen as amended and ordinance amending chapter twelve point five Parks and Recreation, Article Three, McCarthy Field of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick.
Move the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, this, this is here on second reading. If you recall, the ordinance for the parks only included McCarthy Field. We amended it, so we now have rules and regulations for all of the recreation facilities in the town. And that's what this did in its second reading.
I know there's some extensive work here, although I know I saw a lot of emails going back and forth, so.
Yes, and I know Mary Beth pointed out a couple of points to me that, that's why it was amended. They were pretty much typographical in nature, but Don, I met with Don on this and he gave it, he gave it its, his blessing. And I, I personally think that it's an all-encompassing ordinance now for all of our parks and recreation facilities.
And I saw Laurie was actually working close with Don and Freddie.
That's, that's on the next one, the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, the resolution side of it.
Yeah.
All righty, any comments with this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Resolution amending appendix B fees and charges of the Town of West Warwick. Resolution amending appendix B fees and charges of the Town of West Warwick for the Recreation Department previously tabled, sponsored by President Goslin.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Al?
As you recall, at the last meeting, I presented a fee schedule that only included a couple of the facilities. That fee schedule began back in two thousand eighteen and I was not aware of all of the facilities that the town charges fees for. Laurie stepped up to the plate and she supplied me with a list of every recreational facility, including the two gazebo's that exist in the town for which fees are charged. I then prepared a draft of the resolution, including all of the facilities that Laurie had given to me. At that point, I sent it back to Laurie, Fred and to Don, and they took over as far as the numbers were concerned. From there on in, it was several meetings, a lot of emails, a lot of work by Laurie and Fred. And the final product you see before you is a product basically of information supplied by Laurie. Not only did we do a lot of emailing Laurie, Fred, Don and myself, but before it was finalized, we held a meeting with the four of us. And I was just a scrimmer in this. The product, the work product came from Laurie. And so if you have questions about the numbers, it's her, it's her, it was not mine.
Any questions for Al?
No, but I might take a step back. I'm gonna move that we take the item off the table.
Oh, yes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We just had all this discussion, so any other further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? And thank you for all the work that was done on this. I know I, I did see a lot of emails going back and forth.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash sixteen and ordinance repealing certain provisions of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash seven and amending chapter one general provisions of the Code of Ordinances by adding thereto section one dash fourteen Comprehensive Plan Incorporated by Reference.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Al?
If you recall, when the Comprehensive Plan update was presented to you, it was presented by Mark and some young lady that worked on it and they, that, they prepared an ordinance for you that adopted the Comprehensive Plan update. In that ordinance, they provided that the Comprehensive Plan would become appendix D to the Code of Ordinances. So as we're going through and I presently am in the process of working with the attorney from MuniCode on the code update, the total code update that the council approved last January. And I had Mark send the Comprehensive Plan to MuniCode so that it could be entered in the new code update. And we got a surprise. In order to include the full Comprehensive Plan in the Code of Ordinances was gonna cost fifty-seven hundred dollars. So at that point in time, I talked to Mark and said, there's gotta be a better way. I did a little bit of research and a number of the communities, what they have done, instead of putting the whole written Comprehensive Plan in their Code of Ordinances, they have just put a paragraph in that incorporates the code by reference and makes it part of the code without actually being printed into it and costing fifty-seven hundred dollars. So what this ordinance does, it repeals part of the language of your, your original ordinance, the, the part that says Comprehensive Plan is gonna be appendix D and it creates a new section in the, in the, the general provisions of the code that say Comprehensive Plan is incorporated by reference and made part of the code in that fashion. So it's, I guess administrative or money saving or, or it doesn't, it doesn't in any way affect the Comprehensive Plan. It just takes it out of the, the ordinance in total and includes it by reference.
Any questions for Al? Any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash seventeen, second reading sponsored by Councilman Messier and ordinance amending appendix C traffic ordinances of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of West Warwick to include handicap parking in front of twenty-two Riverdale Avenue.
Before, before I move this, I'm, I, I checked back and I'm pretty sure we have not had a first reading.
No, this is for first reading.
Okay, so it's listed as the second reading, so I don't know if that makes a difference, if we can still move forward.
I think you can move forward because the first reading, all it has to be is published in the town hall. It doesn't have to be advertised.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll move the ordinance.
I'll second.
Moving second, and again, this is first reading.
I leave this up to Councilman Messier to, was, I, I received a call from Major Ashenbow that he had received a call from Jason. I contacted Jason and went forward with the ordinance for appendix B, I guess it is.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a constituent who has a handicapped family member. And I think there's just an issue with, you know, other people parking over there and it's kind of, it's, it's an issue for them to get back and forth to the front of the house. So I brought it to the Traffic Committee and Major Ashenbow. There's not a lot more to it, but I think it would be a good idea for this constituent, definitely.
Any questions? The only question I have is if, let's say, Al, and I think this is more for you, if that person moves out of the neighborhood and they no longer need that spot.
The council can, the council can vote to remove it.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yeah.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of West Warwick restricting unassigned capital funds to specific projects and equipment identified in exhibit one attached hereto for a total real, reallocation of four hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Ernie? Still muted.
Ernie, you're on mute.
Thank you. There is four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in the town's capital reserve fund, which has not been allocated to any specific project or purpose. There are many capital improvement projects and equipment that are necessary at the present time that have been discussed in recent weeks and months. This resolution will reserve the allocated funds for specific purposes and there are some recommendations on exhibit one. By reserving these funds, equipment can be, the process can be started to acquire equipment and the process can be started to begin work on these needed products, needed projects. So with that, the, our finance director, the directors and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about the process or those that has been presented before you.
Can, can I ask that, that, I, I understand there are many projects that are out there. Is there a need to, to earmark these at this point in time? Suppose something comes up that is more pressing and how does that handled?
For example, right now, you know, the town needs to address the issue at the old prompting mill that the property on Pulaski Street that the town owns. There is a need to either repair or replace the smokestack. There is a brick building that's hard to see because it's under growth that needs to be demolished or secured somehow. These items are, are very, you know, a health and safety issue that has been identified as well as been identified by our insurance carrier, the Avon Trust. So in order to begin that project, again, we retain the services of Ginger Mine Associates. So with the allocated funding, we will begin doing the analysis for the first step of the project. You know, the cost, various costs associated with various options there. And then as we move forward, depending upon what those are, we would have to go out to compete a bid for whatever the remediation project is. So with that, I indicated in this exhibit that the costs will vary depend upon the approach that the town has taken. So if it goes to the extreme where the town will take down the smokestack, will demolish the brick building that's next to it, plus the engineering fees, we're gonna be into that higher area or could be into higher. So that money needs to be reserved for that project. There's also the first part, the hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Those funds were in the capital budget that was presented to the council in order to reduce the budget to the two percent goal. They were taken out of the budget with the intention of having those items be reserved for the, the items that were in the capital budget to be reserved and purchased using, using the restricted, the unallocated funds in the capital reserve. There's also a need in station two for various improvements, the heating system, the bathroom and the apparatus floor, which is not even. So there are some things that, that need to be done, but then there are some things that to this point don't have to be done. You know, there is a broad item for public works projects to be determined. Certainly that doesn't have to be allocated. But again, you know, Public Works is in the process of doing many projects and there will be many more coming. So that is a potential source of the materials and equipment rentals necessary to do some of these longstanding projects that we are now in a position to do. And the smaller amount for the sidewalk replacement and cost sharing program. Now, this has been discussed at previous meetings. You know, we do have a program that will assist citizens in replacing their sidewalks in a cost sharing program, but then there's no funds available for that program. So the recommendation was allocate eighty-four hundred dollars for that program. But again, some of these I, I would recommend that we allocate because we know we're gonna have expenses. Some that we don't and don't need to be out, don't need to be allocated at this time.
I, I guess my only question would be, and, and thank you, Ernie, and I do recognize that some of these, many of these were discussed at budget time where they were taken out of the budget process to get to, to the one nine three that we, we wanted to get to. I guess my main concern, to be honest with you, is to have a line for fifty thousand dollars that says DPW TBD. Who, who makes the decision on that?
Again, all the, these items, if they're over the bidding threshold, which they would be, would be coming back to the council for an award. You know, this would be the funding source for these. For example, the council awarded, allowed us to use from, you know, Ginger Mine Associates to do planning for this. So our intention is to do some preliminary cost estimates and determine like what a scope of work could be. And then that would go back to the council and it would be, okay, if we repair the smokestack, it would cost this. If we tear it down, it's gonna cost this. So this would come back to the council for a determination of the extent of the project. For the heating and repair, well, that's would be what it would be for. Anything above the threshold, again, would come back to the council. The fifty thousand dollars, that was just a, a thought of materials that may be necessary. But any specific project would come back to the council for award, just like last, last council meeting. There was a, a resolution and a award of sixty thousand dollars from unallocated capital to do some remediation work at the Riverpoint Playground Ballpark for that issue about, you know, fill encroaching onto the, the wetlands. So any project really of any substance, which would be all of these, would come back to the council for an award. This just gives the ability for the departments to go out and secure whatever quotes they need or if they have to bid something out, to bid it out with, with an understanding that, you know, there is funding for those projects.
You, you mentioned the threshold. Can you remind me, I'm sorry, what is the threshold that, that, again?
Well, well, for any capital project is ten thousand dollars. That's a bidding limit. But there are lesser items for, you know, getting three quotes on. And Kristen, I think you can elaborate on those, what those are. I mean, they're rather small for the materials. But Kristen, could you discuss what the, how we go about the quotes and the thresholds for those?
So if, if it's a construction project, it's over ten thousand for the whole project. So we would have to, we would have to go out to bid for whatever the project is. If it's, if it's equipment, the, the, the threshold is five thousand, so we would have to go out to bid. If it was under five thousand, then they would get quotes, the three quotes, and then they would, they would choose the best quote, written quotes for equipment. But for construction, it's, most construction projects are usually over ten thousand. So they would have to go out to bid.
Okay. I, I, I think we all know that there's a laundry list of things that each of us have in our wards that are on the docket to be done. I know there are a lot of drainage projects, there are burn projects, there are. So I'm assuming that that, none of that will fall into this category or will it?
No, the, so I have the capital set and pots of money, basically. So the money left from the original, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand bond, console award money, I have a spreadsheet that allocates what's left from that. It was like forty, forty-three thousand dollars. And then I added all, every ward's asphalt money to that. So I'm keeping a track of it separately. But by ward, I have what they have for their capital money and their asphalt. That's in a separate pot. Everything's in a separate pot.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, wasn't concerned about by ward. My point was there are a number of projects that have to be done across the town.
Right.
In a whole, as a whole. And, and this fifty thousand dollars, how is that gonna be decided how that is spent, I guess is my.
That's, that's, I think that Don, well, you That's, that's, I think that Don, well, you need to prioritize. So it's between you and Don. Priorities need to be made and then council needs to vote on it.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ernie?
I have some. Can I go?
Yes.
Ernie, I know we talked about the smokestack. This is going on almost a year. We, if the council, if we vote to go forward with this tonight, where do we stand on that?
Basically, the first step would be to have an engineering cost analysis done to determine the, basically the options available. For example,
Right.
We can repair the smokestack. And what's, I'll just use a guess, I have no idea. $30,000 to repair it, whatever. And to demolish it may be $100,000. So once we have that cost estimate, then that can come back to the council and a recommendation would be to determine the scope of the project. The recommendation may be that if we can fix it and it will last some years, it may be better to use the difference for some other project that may be very pressing, you know, in the town. So that would be your first step is this cost analysis.
So when can this step begin? I thought, I thought we were kind of a few steps under our belt already.
Well, yeah, we did the, I have, I have asked the engineer to start that already.
Okay.
So that, that
Kathy?
Be done. I will find out. I would assume they would be starting it and getting their team together. We'll follow up on that. But again, when, when we were talking about this, some estimates came in all over the park about what it would cost to demolish the smokestack. One was 125,000, one was a little over 100,000. So again, it's, it's a big unknown. That's why it was listed as up 250. It probably won't cost that much, but we're going to have three components. And then something that we really weren't aware of, there is a brick building that is next to it that is like two-story going down in a bank. And, you know, I've been out in the site and I didn't even know it was there because it's overgrown with growth and brush, but it is there and it does pose a safety hazard. So I would think that would be part of a project as an alternate cost to basically tear that down. So as fast as the, you know, analysis could be done, that would come back to the council. A discussion and a decision we made as to the scope of the project. At that point, then the engineers will prepare the specifications that they put out to bid by the finance department. It would come back and reviewed by the engineers and a recommendation we made to the town.
How, how much, how much is it going to cost? You know, do, do you know, or can give a ballpark for the engineer to come out and do this?
Well, generally, you know, a rule of thumb of, of a project is possibly like 15% of your project could be cost of engineering. So it's 100, it's by the hour, but if it's $100,000, it could be upwards of $15,000 for that.
So we're going to, so we would pay somebody roughly 15, I'm saying 15, right? We would pay somebody $15,000 to tell us that we can either fix it or tear it down. Because that's where we're at.
Well, that would be the end result, but what does it take to fix it? What is the cost to fix it? We don't know any of that. So
How would an engineer, I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't somebody who, if we had trees that had to be taken down, we called, we'd call several tree companies to get estimates, correct? The people who actually do the work? So I'm just curious as to why we need an engineer to come out and, and tell us it's going to be, we know it's going to be cheaper to fix it than it is to tear it down. I still think we should tear it down, but wouldn't we get bids for people who actually will do the work? Can we skip the engineering? I mean, I want to do it the right way, but
First of all,
It just seems like a
I'll just tell you.
An extra step.
Well, I think it's a necessary step. You know, many times, like in projects that are done and they are not done in a proper way and we have problems down the line. This is, this is a difficult project. This is a, a project that is a large smokestack that has loose bricks that leans that's next to buildings that are occupied.
Okay.
This is a
I know.
Structural, it's basically structural engineering. So yes, I would feel more comfortable if a
Okay, that's fine.
Civil engineer who knows what they're doing can assess the project, assess the, the smokestack, its issues, its problems, and develop a reasonable cost estimate. So then an informed decision can be made so that the council will make an informed decision and then that engineer is going to be preparing the bits, specs, reviewing them, making a recommendation and doing the site inspection work. And that is involved in a project like this because again, one, one mistake and boom. So this is why you need a specialized civil engineering and structural engineering people for a project like this. Frankly, I would rather pay that and make sure we have all of our bases covered and then to have, oh my gosh, something happens and
Okay.
A significant problem developed that could have been prevented if foresight was taken. That's my
Okay. Ernie, you make several good points. Thank you.
Can I add something to this?
Go ahead, Don.
We went out today, there's poison ivy that goes up 30 feet. So we went out today and we sprayed to try to get away from the tower. We plan on getting a, I disagree with boarding up the windows on that old building. I think we can pull the wall towards us with a large excavator. And I actually think we can make the building fall down and collapse. So all we have is rubble and no longer a safe, uninhabitable place. And I'm taking a look at that and I'm trying to get a couple of construction guys out there. It may cost as little as $2,000 or $3,000 to take down the conch, the brick building that is covered with, again, poison ivy. But we won't know that until we clear it out a little bit. So over the next week or two weeks, we will excavate out, there's a tree that needs to be removed and we'll open it up so you can actually see what you've got there. But we're, we are making movement on that. So please understand it's not just simple. And I am a structural engineer, I haven't practiced it in 40 years, but I can tell you the top third of that tower is under stress. And if you have to repair it, it may be a lot more than trying to knock it down.
Thank you, Tom.
Don, do you need a demolition permit for that work?
I had the building inspector out there today and we talked it over. And yes, I will pull a quick permit to do that.
Just out of curiosity, Don and Ernie, I think it's Rhode Island demolition, Johnny Bakari and group, they've knocked down a lot of buildings here in West Warwick. And I'm trying to remember who did the majestic building and they did it very clean per se. And actually, we had the building that was in the middle of Arctic, across the street from the gazebo, an empty parking lot. That building was torn down and they were, the buildings were literally 10 feet apart. You might want to just reach out to Rhode Island Wrecking and just get an opinion from them quickly and maybe they can just come out and give you a quick estimate. Or somebody, you know, like Constable Luchardi said, and I understand you want to use engineers, but if you get an idea of somebody coming out and saying, hey, this is what I'll want to knock it down afterwards, and they usually recommend, and they insure all that also.
Dave, I'll follow up on that tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I would have to echo, I have some concerns and Don, I know, you know, you're short-staffed and focusing on doing that. I'm not sure that that's the best use of DPW human capital at this point in time. So if there's another way to do it, I would think that that, we might, we might investigate that.
Again, I would be bringing a contractor in with a very large excavator. Other than a little bit of cleanup around the building, which might take a crew one day to do, everything else will be contracted out.
Okay, thank you.
So is the, is the direction to consult contractors that do this type of work to get cost estimates for, you know, the repair and the demolition and then utilizing that information to determine the course of action?
I'm not saying don't do what you're doing, Ernie. I'm saying add, you should add that to the list and have somebody come out and just give you a guesstimate in personally. If they, if they come in and say, yeah, that's, that's a $30,000 job, you might be very happy to hear that it's, it's not 140,000 or 150,000. And we can go from that direction and like Councilman Luchardi said earlier, he would like to see it down, you know, it might be an option.
So you don't want to go build parallel avenues though you're spending double the money? I mean, so I think, Ernie, that's the question you're asking. Do you put the engineering on hold while, while you have a contractor look at it?
Yeah, because it doesn't, it doesn't, usually it doesn't cost you anything for somebody to give you a guesstimate.
Right. David, I think there are people with hands up in the audience.
Well, this is a resolution.
Okay.
They can bring it up at public comment, ordinances and licenses only.
Does it, okay, does it hurt?
I think we should stick with public comment rather than start to allow people at every single point. It's not, not appropriate.
Wow.
I think, I think it's, um, Ernie, you made a very good argument to the question that I had. If you feel that this is the safest thing to do, I'm, I'm fine with it personally. I mean, I just, I just want to get the ball rolling. I know where, where in the beginning of October, and I, I'm not quite sure. I think it's going to take longer to get the ball rolling and to get people out there to look at it and, and finally say, yes, it has to come down or no, it doesn't. And the actual work is going to be to, you know, when we actually physically do it. So I, if you feel the engineer is the best way to go, then, then I'm for that. That's fine.
Any other comment?
No, I guess, haven't I, is there anyone that thinks that it should try to be repaired?
No.
No.
So what would the engineer be doing for us, telling us how to best take it down?
Well, again, if there is a cost to repair, whatever that may be versus demolish, personally, you look at it, it should come down. It's in a very precarious location. So my feeling is it should come down, but when we're looking at available funds for projects that we need done. If the cost to repair is lower, substantially lower than demolition, then would the council want an option to say, you know, we can secure the, the tower and utilize this funding for some other important project that will not occur if, if there isn't funding available? So the thought was to give the council options as to what, what they may want to do. Now, if the decision is let's just tear it down, then no, we can just go right to the putting specifications together and put a bidding it out for demolition and either demolition of the structure, the brick structure, which is also includes parting it away. We can, we can go right to that point then. Cut to that if that's, if that's the direction we want to go in.
Is there, is there any crazy possibility that someone might want to buy it? Or we, we could give it to someone?
If someone wants to buy it for a dollar, that would be a great idea. I'm sure that would be a sale we'd like to, but again,
You never know, you never know. Let me, let me ask you, does the engineer provide any cover for us? And that's, that's a bad word, but any protection for us? Given that they will, they will provide an opinion if it doesn't seem to go the way it should or, again, I want to know what, what's the benefit of having the engineer?
The, the benefit would be to have someone and with the specific expertise to be able to develop very accurate costs of options. That's what it is. So then later a decision can be made. Do we want to demolish at this cost or repair at a lesser cost? The idea was to give council a, an option on the scope of the project and so that if funds could be used elsewhere for needed projects that would not necessarily get done because of lateral funds. So that's my thought of having that analysis done. So that's the reason. Now, again, one of, one of the discussions we had is, well, it's got to come down, look at it, you know, you know, you know, a third of it looks like it needs to be repointed or something, which would be an expense. Clearly, we can go right to that stage or we can get various contractors come up and give opinions, but you know, you're going to get opinions from different people and they may vary into the size and cost. I don't know. But my objective was to provide an option to the council. If the council would feel comfortable with the option coming from a few contractors in the business and you feel comfortable with that data to make a decision, then, you know, sure, that can be done and provide that information for, if, if the council wants an option. So, you know, that was my intent with having the analysis done.
Can I just add something real quick? It's even more important is how you're taking this building down. You can bring a dozen contractors in and you really don't know whether they're fly-by-night contractors or what method they're going to use. You can implode that structure, you can take it down brick by brick. What you're asking the engineer to do is to tell you the safest, most economical method is disassembling that tower. And I, I've done a lot of work, but I've never done that.
Is that what the engineer would do as well?
Yes.
Are there companies that specialize in this kind of thing?
Yes.
I assume there are. I assume we have some even local companies that specialize in doing this. And would it hurt to reach out to them first just to see, because I have no idea. You know, you, you put 150, I have no idea what it costs. Don, you just said a couple thousand dollars to push the wall down. That's a big difference.
That's only for that brick building that's next to it that had a major fire in it 10 or 20 years ago.
Right.
So we can knock that down really easy. And then it's just a matter of, what do we do with the rubble afterwards? But that eliminates the safety issue.
So back to the smokestack. Ernie, when you're, when you're talking about the engineer giving us an option to either fix or tear it down, you're also talking, like is what Don's just saying is when a bid would go out, the engineer would write the specs on the safest, on the safest way to tear that down. So a company would bid on So a company would bid on if the engineer said it has to be imploded. That's the safest way. Then the bid that would go out would be for a company to commit to commit and load it, correct?
Well, yes, the the engineer is going to prepare the detailed specifications on.
Okay.
Demolition, however it would be, however they believe is the safest way to do that. So.
So if something happens. Say, all right, all this is done. The engineer puts the specs together, company bids on it. They have to obviously have to do it according to the specifications. Are we off the hook if something happens?
Well, there would be insurance requirements for the successful bidder. They would have to have insurance requirements. I would assume.
Right.
Not sure that town would be a co insured, but it have they would have insurance for this project. Now, to me, it looks like something that is complicated. I don't know, but given the height, where it is, the proximity of buildings. I'm sure there are companies that do this type of work and are are trained for this, but they would have insurance. They would know what they're doing. They would follow the specifications. We would have an inspector out from the engineering firm to make sure it's being done according to these specifications. And everything is being done the way it should be in, you know, in the town's interest. That goes from tearing it down to hauling it away. I don't know if any testing would need to be done for various.
Okay.
Rule that may or may not be there. But those are things that have.
So tonight, we're we're what we're doing, we're giving, and I'm I'm just trying to make sense of all this too. We're we're giving you the go ahead on this particular project as well as. Assigning funds? Or does this project have to come before the council specific specifically to have an engineer go out?
If the funds are out, we will start the project. The start of the project would be to determine the cost. Analysis and cost of the the options.
Okay.
So that's what we'll be starting with now. If there there is a request that. The director contact various companies that. Work in this area have done this type of work before independently and can ask them what it would cost to. Tear it down, or I don't know if they would know about fixing it, but what the cost would be to tear it down. Certainly, that information would can be relayed back. To the council as far as the demolition goes. Again, that that's their opinion, as as the director said, based on what they see.
Would that?
Different ones.
Would would that hurt? Because obviously, we have to go out to bid anyway. With the if we engineer go out. Then he or she writes the specifications and then it would have to go out to bid. If we have the contractors come out now, would that hurt the bid process?
No, I wouldn't think so, because you're like like any type of project, you know, you get ideas from vendors as to what the cost may be. So I don't know if that.
So could be both? Would it hurt to do both?
Because you're going to have to go out to go through the competitive bid process. And, you know, it's a sealed bid process and if you open at the same time, so no one would know what other. Bid there would be so it's giving an estimate, just like, you know, if you have the mediation project, you know, the director can, you know. Calculate what he thinks my dimensions are going to be. I don't know if he contacted anyone to get an idea as well, but clearly, having. Contractors vendors in the area to give an idea as a ballpark.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a problem because a lot of times that's used for budgeting process, you know, regular regular budgeting process. How much you think this would be? You know, and that's a basis for our budgetary estimate. So I wouldn't see that would have any adverse effect in a competitive bid process.
Okay, thank you.
Just following up on what Jason just said, though. So. If we had specs written by the engineer, the specs were followed by the contractor to the T and something went wrong. Where does that liability, even though the contractor has insurance, if they did exactly what we told them to do, where does that liability lie? Is it with the engineer? Is it with the town? What happens?
Oh, you know, I'll let. Clearly, more clearly and likely than again, have an insurance policy for for their work and damages. But again, I think solicitors are better able to answer that new question. Tim?
Tim, you're on mute.
Tim? Maybe we're on mute.
Yep.
Now we can.
Thank you.
Tim, your audio is horrible.
Back on mute.
God, I don't read.
Yeah.
What's the question?
I I asked the question about liability. So if if an engineer starts the process, tells us draws up the specs. This is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to do it. And the contractor comes in, follows those specs.
Obvious liability?
I can't hear Tim.
Engineer, contractor, their insurance company should indemnify the town whatsoever, because we are relying on their expertise and professional.
Tim, you're really breaking up really bad.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you said.
Councilman, I think you said the company would have to indemnify the town.
Okay.
Can I add something in here? We we end up getting a million dollars in liability insurance on this. So if something were to happen, there would be insurance. They write their writers to that insurance indemnifying the town. So it would be all on the contractor doing the work. Now, if the engineer made a mistake, it would be up to the contractor then, if he wants to take them to court in a civil case. But as far as the town goes, we're indemnified and we have the insurance in it, and that is part of a good contract.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, at this point, what I would recommend is that the director contact a few firms that do this type of work. And see if you can get some estimates as to the cost of demolition. At least have that number and I don't and possibly a cost of repair and. And then at that point, bring that back and and see what those differences are and. As as Don said, they may be not that far different, you know, and that may be a enough to make a. Just to, you know, move move along.
All right, with that being said, roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes, with the understanding that we will be involved in vetting the projects to be done by DPW.
Thank you, Councilman D'Amico.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Resolution requesting does the town council approve Ambient Sound Inc. at a cost of $1,047 to conduct an evaluation of the current wiring. And equipment in order to establish effective live and distance audience communication for town council and other meetings held in town council chambers. And make recommendations for the best options utilizing as much of the current equipment as possible. In order to provide an accurate quote, Ambient Sound Inc. will need to spend seven to 10 hours to identify the wiring. And component interconnectivity with newer technologies needed to accommodate live and virtual meetings sponsored by. Council President Gosman.
His resolution.
Second.
Well, this seconded and this was actually a request from John Patello. We actually had a meeting at Town Hall a couple of weeks back. To through via Zoom and YouTube and we had a lot of complaints that they could not hear us properly and it became. Actually, a nightmare of a meeting where we had to just hurry up and. Get out of the meeting. So, John, do you want to speak on this?
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, we had a meeting with Ambient Sound, myself, Joe Hull and Chief Ferrone, and we came up with a kind of a unique design. Where we we have equipment that was put in place here by former Councilman Drew and a outside contractor. None of us were involved with the installation at the time. We've called it a unique. I I guess we can call it a vision. We would actually turn the council chambers into a working television studio. So that you as council people could sit in in council chambers, hold a meeting, going into executive session if need be. And then come back out and you could actually hold your meeting using the equipment that the town purchased some, I believe it was 10 years ago, maybe a little less, maybe eight years ago. And basically broadcast out to Zoom like we are now and YouTube, but kind of reconfigure the audio and visual video portion of the council chambers. So that it's more conducive to a meeting via Zoom and via YouTube. So. Where we do have some technologically advanced people in the town, we don't know everything about what's there and how we can utilize it to the best of its ability. So this this company, which is on an MPA as well through the state, was suggested to us by Clerk Base. To come on in and give us a an estimate of what would what could be done and how much it would take. So that's where we're going with this.
Any questions for John?
So this isn't actually to outfit it. This is just to do an evaluation.
We have a lot of components there. We have the two cameras. We have the switcher in the back. We we actually, according to Ambient Sound, the person that came out and spoke with us, he goes, we have a very sophisticated system. That was purchased eight years ago. So we want to see what it can what can be done to it, if anything, to make it conducive to be utilized with Zoom, but to have. The council in chambers as well. So just want to go forward. Just wanted to estimate to see what what can be done. Because I don't foresee Zoom going away anytime soon.
No, I would agree with you.
My first thought on this, when I saw the resolution was, what does John Patello think? That was going to be my question. So knowing knowing that you think this is a good idea, I would move forward with it.
Like I said, I have I have a vision. So let's just see if we can work and Ambient Sound actually agreed with the way they actually gave us some ideas as well to make it better. So we just want to see where it goes.
Thank you, John. Any other comment? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
Definitely. I think it's a great idea.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Hold on one second. Solicitor Williamson, you have a question?
You hear me, David?
No, you're breaking up.
All right, I'm on the phone. I'm listening on the phone.
I'm not even sure what he said.
I think he said something about because of his problems, he can't make a presentation. I I'm not sure of that, but I don't know. I can hardly hear him.
Well, that that could be the next thing, the update from the solicitor on the discussion action.
I'll just take the roll call vote on the ambient sound. Councilman Luchardi?
Yes.
Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
Appointment to the zoning board review resolved that the town council hereby appoints the following individual to serve as a member of the West Fork Zoning Board Review. For the town of West Fork, where they term to expire on seven, 2025. This is a reappointment. I just noticed this set appointment.
I'll.
There's an appointment. It doesn't have to be a re. It's still pointing.
Okay, okay.
Um, I I actually moved the name of. Justin Kootu. He's actually a constituent of mine and he's done a very good job. And I think Al can attest to that. So anybody want to second that?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Just that Justin's doing a good job, serving well.
If I may, I I would hope you reappoint. He's a valuable member to the to the zoning board and I think we've got a. Good, an excellent zoning board. I've been with it since 2004 and I don't want to see him go. I was very happy that he he re has to be reappointed.
You, Al. Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilman Luchardi?
I'm actually recusing myself.
Oh, yep. Councilman Messier?
Yes.
Councilman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman D'Amico?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Discussion action. One update from Solicitor Williamson and DPW Director on Factory Street Playground sponsored by Town Council.
I'm going to see if Timmy's audio is back. You know, he's going to try to dial in. Timmy? Horrible.
Not great.
Well, my suggestion is that the final report on the investigation will be available at the next meeting. And I've got all the documentation and I just need to do a couple of people from DM, the local trust, and also the governor's commission.
So I I'm hearing, and this is I'm just repeating what I heard. That the final will be done for the next council meeting. You have a couple of interviews with DM and one from the local trust. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Would it be worthwhile to have Don just give a little update as to where it is right now?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask for Don to give.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Don, you want to give us an update of where we stand as of today as far as reconstructing?
Uh, yes. Probuilt came down last week and spent an entire week and did what I call warranty work. And they corrected all of the elevation changes that we had. So all of that part, which was out of compliance, is now in compliance. The fence is set, the the wood chips inside have not been set. And I am looking into what it would cost to put a rubberized surface down. You can go partial, you can go crumbs, you can go full. The cost on it is roughly $170 a square foot. That's what I'm finding out through the industry. And I have a couple of photos from Jamestown, Rhode Island, where they did a partial where it was kind of just a few paths. And then they still used the wood chips. I don't have a cost yet for doing that. Again, I'm I'm working with O'Brien and Sons to try to come up with a an estimate for that playground. I don't want to put new wood chips in until we make a decision. I don't want to do work twice if I don't have to. But everything else on that is moving forward. The parking area, I was calculating how much it was going to cost before the meeting. And it looks like it's going to be about five grand of asphalt and gravel. And I can get the contractor, Deambra, to to do that. So I'll get an estimate directly from them. But the key on that is we have to bring that elevation up to where it matches what the ADA requirements are. So there's going to be about a foot of fill and asphalt. And we're going to do it, Mary Beth, the way I showed you. Out in the field where they drive off from the parking lot, make a left hand turn and park. And then there'll be a hammerhead so that they can pull out and then drive out facing the traffic versus trying to back out. So we are going to make it a little bit user friendly. And that's pretty much where we're at. We plan on trying to put the loam around the parking lot this week. Um, we plan on trying to put the loam around the uh parking lot uh this week, uh so we can throw some grass seed on it. And the other project that we've got going on uh behind the ball fields where we're moving that material. We are finding a lot of large boulders and I'm going to use the large boulders around the fence. To protect the uh playground from a careening car. That's all I got.
Any questions for Don?
No, I, I will say that I, I did uh, when the governor, uh representative from the governor's office was out there on Thursday, I, I was there. And she seemed um, happy that we had her involved. Um, I asked her directly and, and. Explained that we wanted her to sign off and. Um, officially and in writing, uh, once we, once we're done, we feel that's important and she agreed with that. Um, she seemed to be happy with the progress that was made. Uh, Peter from Probuilt was there, working hard. Didn't really get to talk to him that much, but I do have his number. Um, and I, I'm the one actually that. And I'm sorry about that, Don, but I'm the one that brought up the, the rubberized mat instead of doing the wood chips. You know, and whether that, even though there's an expense, um, there's no doubt about it. And what, what is the square footage of the playground, Don? Just out of curiosity?
It's seventy feet by a hundred feet, so I believe that's seventy thousand square feet. Or seventy thou, uh, seven thousand square feet.
Do we, do we have a, do we have an estimated uh of what the cost would be for the rubberized matting?
No, I'm still working on that, sorry.
Yeah, it, it.
I, and I agree, I agree with Mary Beth, because while we, while we're doing this right now in the beginning. And I know I had brought this up from the beginning, honestly, that's what it probably should have been. And while, once we've gone through this, and I know it's, it's been awful and it's taken too long. But at this point, I, I feel like that that's probably something where we should at least get a cost and see if it's worth it to do that.
And in the long run, it probably. Yeah, I, I agree with you. I, I mean, one seventy, that surprises me that it's quite that expensive, uh, a square foot, but um. One thing that, that uh, the representative from the governor's office did say is that she would expect. That during the season, which would be spring, summer and fall, that we would have someone out there daily. Raking those wood chips and I don't see where that will happen, to be honest with you, on a regular basis and then after. Uh, in the off-season, at least weekly, so I, I think.
If you try to do the cost estimate of how much.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
And not even the cost, it, it's, it's a cost benefits analysis, but it's also the reality of. Will we be in compliance with what the governor's offices would be expecting us to do for an ADA and. It might cost us a little more upfront, um, but I, I, I think it's something that should be explored.
Hundred percent, yes, I hundred percent agree with you.
Uh, again, if I, I don't want to keep interrupting, but again, if we do the partial, which is. Uh, basically pathways around with the um, with the material and then still stay with the rubber chips, uh, not the rubber chips. The uh wood chips in the middle, uh, that will work. And I will send all of you the pictures of uh. Um, Jamestown's uh playground, so you can take a look at it. I also am approaching three different vendors to come out and inspect the six playgrounds that we have. So that we can get a laundry list of items that we need to fix uh from playground safety, not an ADA's uh standpoint. But from a playground safety, so we can put that on our laundry list to get done this winter.
Good idea, Don.
Thank you.
I, I have a question.
Right, Jay.
Um, when, when Probuilt came out, you said they spent a week over there. I'm, I don't. I mean, we haven't dealt with them, the, the playground had been completed. What did they do and what it like? Are they, are they charging us for this or is this gonna be like? Um. I don't understand how somebody, like the, the whole thing is put to bed, they finished, they moved on, going on to other jobs. I don't know why he would come back and, and do, put more work into it.
I'm a very, I'm a very persuasive guy.
I think, I think Don referred to it as warranty work. Um, I, I, I'm under the impression that I'm gonna wait for, for the solicitors. Report to find out um, for sure, but I got the impression that perhaps we did not ask him to come out, we did not let him know of, of the. But again, I, I, that's all, I, it's premature to have any of that conversation. Um.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we, we are not. Oh no, that is correct, right? We're not paying him more right now?
That is correct. We did not pay uh Probuilt a penny. Uh, we did buy the gravel that was used out there and we're buying the loam out there. And we did buy the fittings for the fence. Other than that, everything was taken care of by Probuilt. And when you ask what they did, they basically reset the entire fence. Uh, they then went and took the uh three to five structure, which is in the upper left-hand corner. And they lowered that a foot. Uh, then they came back and lowered the merry-go-round a foot. And they went to the slide and that got elevated a foot. And between just manipulating those three pieces of equipment, everything now is within one point five percent. Which is well within the two percent uh required by ADA.
And Don, the thing that Denise actually brought up was um whether the, the, the um. Climb up things, I forgot what she called them, whether they were, were set correctly and met specifications and did we have the right. Uh, ratio of accessible and non-accessible.
I went back and I talked with um, uh, Megan O'Brien. And she provided, and I thought I had sent that out to all of you, she'd provided the spreadsheet with all of the equipment. That does in fact meet ADA and in fact, we actually exceed ADA out there. For the accessibility for the amount of equipment and et cetera. Uh, I still need to get a. Professional to come out from an ADA standpoint and say that that is in fact the truth. But all I wanted to do is take what equipment that was purchased by the town two years ago. And make sure that that was set right. That's now set right. If we need to add a piece of equipment to meet ADA. Uh, then that's another discussion for another day. I'll also say that the O'Brien and Sons, uh, they're the best in New England. And they will, uh, if they're telling me that they did everything and laid everything out for it to be ADA compliant. I'm ninety-five percent sure that it's ADA compliant. And again, I'll send that to you guys again.
It, no, actually, we ha, I, I know we do have it. I don't know, was, was Denise uh copied on that because she asked for a copy of that as well?
I believe I sent it to her as well. I think I sent it to everybody, but I'll double check.
Yeah, just make sure she has it and she's signing off on it and agrees with it. That, that's, again. We don't want to go back to the governor's office after the fact. We might as well do it while we're in the process.
You got it.
Thank you for the update, John.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mary.
The probability of a new road bond be placed on the next referendum for public vote. This discussion to focus on the current bond debt yet to be paid, current bond rating. The poor condition of several roads throughout the town and the bond amount needed to significantly improve the most distressed roads. Sponsored by Council Vice President D'Amico.
Okay, guys, so give me a couple of minutes to go through this. This is um, there's a lot of components to this and I just want to. Talk about some of the history for the people who are listening, so they have a better understanding of, you know, where we're coming from. And personally, where I'd like to see us go. So a few years back, and I don't remember the exact date, somewhere around two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Uh, council put a bond forward which was voted on and agreed to by the people for five million dollars. That five million dollars, as we know, was equally divided between each ward. And it was up to the council person at that time, as well as DPW, to make determinations within those wards. As to where this money needs to go. So in Ward Five, um, Councilman Tucker along with DPW. Uh, made determinations, of course, East Greenwich Avenue and um, uh, Green Bush were priorities. And that took up quite a bit of the one million dollars and it left money for about five or six roads beyond that. Um, but there were several others, you know, conversations that I had with, with Councilman Tucker. There were several others that, that could have been addressed, there just wasn't enough money. And the truth is that I have several roads in my ward, I've been talking about this for a very long time, that are extremely distressed. Uh, Lunsdale Avenue, for example, complete mess. Um, I have estimates on that, that Don has given me. Probably about three hundred thousand dollars just to complete Lunsdale alone. And, and I can tell you that I get phone calls, I get emails, I can produce them for you. From several people who live along Lunsdale, as well as people who drive it on a regular basis as a cut-through. Um, and it's just one of many off of Coeset Avenue that are so in need. Uh, a few weeks back. Uh, some roads were completed behind Dunkin' Donuts, Coolest, Cedar, uh, Bayberry, Pots of Ponderosa. Uh, that was not, people should not misunderstand, this was not something that was paid for through the town. This was not part of any bond or any type of uh block grant. This was due to an ordinance that was passed in two thousand twelve where. The utility companies essentially have to repave any road that goes beyond fifty feet of uh work that's done. So I saw this as a blessing, right, that I actually got some roads done in my ward. Uh, what people need to understand, Ward Five does not qualify for the bu, the block grants, right? We do not have any more money that we can spend. So we're in a precarious situation because we're five years later. I have so many roads that have to get done and I know that we are currently still paying for a past bond. But I feel like at this time, and I was gonna bring this forward next year, but, but I almost feel like this can't wait. That it needs to be addressed now. We have a referendum coming up for the state, maybe we can like piggyback them in some way. And put it out before the people again, get another bond out there. Um, I know I've had conversations with some of the council along the way and I think. It's recognized that I, I, I have a number of roads. I need about probably a million and a half just to complete the necessary roads in Ward Five. Um, I think this is a good time. We have a pretty good rating. I think Moody's gave us like a B double A rating. Um, in November of last year, if I remember correctly, um, you know. I'm not sure how else to address this. I mean, to keep filling in potholes and cracks and. I can't tell you how many times I've had DPW on numerous sites, you know, Don can attest to this, Freddie can attest to this. And we're just like throwing our hands up, like how much can you just keep patching? We are in desperate need in our ward and, and frankly, um, it, it's almost unfair that we don't qualify for the bonds just because. You know, we're in a different socio-economic um, position. It doesn't seem fair. We all drive the same roads, we're all part of the same town. So I'm putting it before.
I think we lost you, John.
Put in for John to get some new internet too on that bond.
John, we didn't hear the tail end of that. It, it.
That was me crying.
Oh, okay.
I, I want to open up the discussion because as I said, I'm not sure if the timing's great, but.
I, I, I would certainly ask Ernie to, to, and Kristen to chime in. I wholeheartedly agree that it might be a good. It, it is a good time to start to look at this and figure out what we need to do. I am up, um, you just said there, you have about a million and a half in Ward Five. As far as the road money comes, to be honest with you, I, I consider us all one town. And I think as a council, we should sit and decide which roads need to be done. In, in its totality, not, not by equal, equal division of, I mean, the number of roads in each ward isn't the same, but. It just doesn't make sense to do it that way. I think it's a needs-based assessment.
I think too, you know, even if we put together some type of committee, you know, put the DPW director on there, put. You know, the fire chief, the police chief, people who are driving these roads on a regular basis, um, and leave it to a committee to make the determination. Um, I, I would be good with that too. It doesn't have to be like it was in the past. We are one town.
And I, and I agree, when I get on, um, I had about a half a million dollars left in mind, but I, I didn't really have access to any of it because. It was all earmarked for the Ship Yav Drainage Project. I think it was about, I think the number was five hundred. Um, it was all earmarked for that project. So there's so many roads in my ward that absolutely need, um, need work, but I, I basically had zero. Zero dollars and this is going on four years, so I'm, I agree with you as well.
And, and a lot of people believe that it's a part of, you know, the budget each year that they're voting for and it's just not, it's separate. They want to know where the roads are. Why aren't we doing roads? I, I hear that question all the time. Why aren't you doing roads? I see roads getting done next door, church ave, whatever, and I have to explain to them, well, that's road bond money, that's, you know, block money, excuse me.
I, I agree that we need a road bond. I, I, I still think that we. John, you have a lot of longer roads in Ward Five. I think than I, than I do, I know in Ward, that I'm in Ward, in Ward Four. Um. Unfortunately, I qualify for CDVG money, it's how Church Street got done. Um, and I've been very conservative with the remainder of road bond money that I, that I had left, left over in Ward Four and I still have money. But if we put a new bond out, um, I agree we are one town. But, you know, I have a lot of streets and, and I'm sure we all do in, in our wards that are smaller streets. You know, some dead ends that need addressing. And I think that they're just as important. To the seven, eight houses that live on a dead end than a cut-through.
Councilman, I completely agree. Um, in fact, a lot of the streets running off of Coeset, that, some of them are less than a hundred yards long. Um, for example, like Hamlet, it's extremely, you know, it's forgotten, it's like this forgotten road. Um, and, and roads that run parallel to it. Again, I would be open to putting it before some type of committee to like, you know, search out the roads. And determine which ones are worse, whether they're two feet long or two miles long. And, and Councilman Lachardi, we have sections of New London Turnpike that we share that should be addressed.
I think we should pave the whole turnpike, to be honest with you.
Well, yeah, I mean, absolutely, if we can afford it.
So, so I think. Go ahead, Jason.
I, um, I think, yes, I, I agree that we should. Possibly put out another bond. I think we obviously have another meeting or maybe several meetings to determine. How we're actually going to spend that money. I, I think that as council people. We should have a certain amount dedicated to our wards. Um, not, not a million dollars. If, if it was a five million dollar bond, maybe we have two hundred fifty thousand dollars or three hundred or so that we could. Determine that strictly goes into our ward and the rest could go into a town account and we could agree at that point.
I, I don't think we have to come up with, but the, and the, the reality is what you do is you sit down beforehand. And you look at what you may need and you assess what your roads are and, and, and figure out how much of a bond you can afford. And go through that process by, by looking at, and, and I think, uh, Don. You've talked about having, um, having a, a playbook and, and.
Payment management program.
That's correct and, and, and that's. No, I was just gonna say, so.
Go ahead, I'll make my plug after, well, my plug is simply this. The way you're approaching it is the most expensive way to do this work. You are not doing all of the preventative maintenance, you're not doing the crack sealing, you're not doing chip seal. Yeah, I mean, there's a multitude of things you can do to lower the cost. The way you lower the cost is to repairing the roads, so they don't last fifteen years, they last forty-five. What I'm going to suggest to you, and you guys take it as a board and decide, we should have a workshop, if you give me two weeks. I can put together a great presentation for you and I may even bring in a few people to talk to you about pavement management. And how to go about it. But if you continue to do it this way, you're always going to be doing the reclaim. And the reclaim roads is ten times more expensive than a mill and overlay. So that's my spiel and I'm more than happy to do a workshop with you. Where we can show you everything and just go from there.
Yeah, I can't imagine anybody would disagree with going through that process and, and again, everyone can bring their wish lists and their thoughts. And, and then, um, we can get some professional opinions as to. I, I doubt there's a road in town that uh probably couldn't use some attention. And that's unfortunate, but that's the reality of it.
Could, could we possibly get, um, I had asked Kristen, Kristen gave me the information. On, I just asked her for the roads in Ward Four, uh, because I do have money to spend. And I'm, I'm trying to get a plan together of, we have the water company that has done some roads. Um, I know a lot in my ward, um, over the past few years. I know a lot in my ward over the past few years and they're planning to do some more. And they just, we had some road work done. John, you had some done in Ward five, right, on Coeset Avenue?
That's correct. That was National Grid.
So we have National Grid, we have the water company that have done roads recently. CDBG money was spent on roads in, I think, Wards two, three, and four. And then road bond. But I know Kristen's records only go back to 2015. So, Don, I had asked, your department's records only go back to 2015.
Why would they only back to 2015?
I asked, that's what I got. So is there any way, Don, can you dig a little bit deeper? And I was looking to go back, try and go back 10 years. Just so I have some type of a map of who did what. I'm also going to the water company to get a list of roads they've done. I was just doing specific to my ward, but I think maybe we could all use it townwide. That way, I mean, I've had some constituents say to me, well, you know, Church Street was just done eight years ago or 10 years ago or something. What they don't understand is it didn't cost the town any money. We used a CDBG grant, but it did need it again. So I'm trying to find the roads that weren't done four, five, six years ago. Some roads have haven't been done for a long time, so it'd be great to have that information.
I believe we also have to, we have to do a better job coordinating with Kent County Water and National Grid. There have been instances where we've, that's right, then the sewer department, there have been instances where we've done roads and, you know, three months later, somebody's out digging it up and we should avoid that, obviously. So I agree, it's important to know what's been done, but we can actually start by looking at what we think needs to be done now too. So having the records would be helpful. But it's more, it's more of a question of what do we think needs to be done now? Assessing it, coming up with a cost associated with that. And then Ernie and Kristen, I don't know if you'd want to talk about the process itself. You're muted.
As far as a big picture, we had, as we were preparing the FY21 budget, the original budget, we were looking at the trends of the budgets that were being prepared, were being prepared very well, decisions in the budgets were very well, our fiscal position was improving. We had a bond rating upgrade. We did a review of the debt service when it's coming off. And in my budget message, I believe I indicated that we were going in a position where pre-COVID-19, that we would have been in a position to have a $5 million, we picked that just because that's what the last one was for this November ballot. Because everything was trending very well. Debt service is coming off in the future. So it's coming off, so new debt service could be layered in. So it was looking, again, very promising. So we have done work as far as that service coming off to see what we can afford. We had a consultation with our fiscal advisor, you know, working with us. So we were getting into a position where the town could issue a bond, a $5 million bond and have a very good bond rating, you know, for debt service. And then, you know, with COVID-19 starting, then it just became, you know, everything just went back, you know, to just, you know, going with, you know, what we had to do to keep things going with the ever changing COVID-19 world. But, you know, some of our factors were good. You know, our fund balance, our fiscal was increasing, our fiscal condition was improving. With the debt layering off, we were in a position where a bond could be issued. Because again, when you, you know, there are many components and Kristen can elaborate on it, but the first is the voter approval. And then after you have the voter approval, then you have the mechanism of going out and issuing the bonds. Whether you issue them full or in part, because there are requirements on how fast the bonds can be spent. You know, there would be, the first part would be the voter approval. And then, you know, what we had estimated was potential bond issue in November. The work being done and work could possibly begin, I think, the following late spring or summer for starting road work. But then again, everything just went, you know, halt was made to everything with COVID-19. So the town is in a good favorable position for debt coming off. That's always important. Because you can wear additional debt in. So, you know, if nothing else happens to the town, you know, we would be in a position to issue debt. Well, the bond authorization could come at really any time. And then the debt would be issued late in the spring, early summer, and then work could be done. So we have the elements of, you know, fiscally putting a package together as long as there are no major changes coming as a result, fiscally as a result of COVID-19. We are positioned, you know, to do that. Kristen, if you wanted to elaborate, that would be good.
Yeah, our goal originally, like when we met with Adam, was to go out for the voter approval to, like Ernie said, start, start the work, go get the bond by the, you know, late spring, early summer. Start the work, but structure the debt so that the debt was falling off. I believe the last step payment for one of our bonds was fiscal year 22. We wanted the new debt payment to be in fiscal year 23. So that was, and we had a plan in place for that. So I would still err on the side of caution till the state budget is passed to make sure that we're not getting caught anymore money for fiscal year 21. And then head down that path, you know, once we're, you know, we're not going to suffer any setbacks for fiscal year 21. Then I would say we can, you know, set out for voter approval and continue on the path that we had laid out, the plan that we had laid out for the road bond.
Kristen, can a referendum be issued at any point?
So I believe it can only be in May. May with the voter referendum for the budget or in November? From what I understand.
Yeah, so that was my thought. I thought it was November and I was thinking June, but you're saying May.
Well, that's when we normally have our budget vote.
Right.
Yeah. And my understanding is that the state, and again, this is obviously all subject to change, but my understanding is that the state is, you know, going to address their budget after the election. And that any bond issues that have been brought before the legislature would be put on a ballot in February. So that's just something to keep in mind if indeed that that was going to happen. So that might be another opportunity to address the situation. If there are any at all, because, you know, depending on, I think I read something just as I was coming into the meeting that basically any talks about aid to cities and states and towns is on hold till after the election at this point in time.
Right. You certainly could form a committee and start meeting, have a plan, figure out what roads you want to do, have a plan in place. And then once we're ready to move forward, then we're ready.
Absolutely. I would agree with that.
That's one of the first things that when, if we're going to do a rib road and bridge bond, which is usually the cheapest interest rate, they want a list of roads when you're, when you're putting in for the money. So that would absolutely be a great plan to have that ready to go.
I agree. So I'd benefit from Don presenting what a a solid program would look like. So I don't think that hurts either. Because once we get the roads done, we should, should understand how we're going to maintain them and how much that's going to cost.
Do we know if National Grid is planning on doing any other roads in town?
I don't know, and I'm going to have to talk with them, the sewer department and the water department within the next week to try to see if they've got a schedule. And I can't give them schedules because we don't have one.
The water, Bob Boyer, who is on the Kent County Water Board, he sent us, I think it was maybe two or three weeks ago, I think each of us on the council got it. I don't know who else did, but a list of roads that they, the water company is planning on doing. Beginning, I believe, next year.
I don't believe I got a copy of that.
We can get a copy for you.
Yeah, we can get, yeah, we can get you one. You should have that.
So I think it sounds like we're in agreement that we should start the process, maybe put a group together and be ready to go if and when we get a green light that there's some money around and our budget is, you know, the state budget's set.
That sounds good.
And see if the taxpayers in West Warwick have an appetite to do that.
I think they would line up from Ward five. We can sell popcorn.
I mean, that might be a way to help pay for the roads.
Well, pretty expensive popcorn.
Yeah.
Discussion regarding parking ordinance in the town of West Warwick sponsored by Councilwoman Williamson.
Yes, actually, I actually, I had a conversation with Colonel Knott. I was asking, what are the, what is the ordinance? I also talked to LD Fiori. What ordinances are on the books? I have received a number of complaints about people parking on sidewalks. And I know that we have issues where we have narrow streets and I don't know if emergency vehicles have issues, what the process is. So I just, I wanted to put it out there to let people know that it is being looked at. And Colonel, I don't know if you'd like to, you and I had a conversation last week.
I'll kind of give a Cliff Notes version of what we talked about, kind of a chronological history. In my 26 years, the parking on sidewalk issue specifically has gotten worse. Obviously, we talked about where in Old Milltown, a lot of our sections that surrounding the mills have, you know, high density housing, streets that were designed back when people walked and dealt with trolleys on Main and Washington Street. So now that people own a lot of vehicles, there's not a lot of off-street parking. And on-street parking is very limited and hampered by narrow streets. So in my 26 years, we've not done strict enforcement on parking on sidewalks. Where we focused our time is on the radius put out by the school department on where the kids need to walk. And those are the areas that we try to focus on. When officers notice them, they'll try to make notification to get those moved. Or put warnings on the cars and in more rare circumstances, but it does happen, ticket vehicles. So that's kind of the chronological history. Obviously, some of the other sections in town have significantly wider roads and a lot of sections don't even have sidewalks. So that's not really an issue there. So that's kind of the historical handling of it. But in this discussion and speaking with you and then Attorney DeFiori, I think there's some clarity issues within our ordinances. And I think now that we're doing the Mooney Code revamp, it's a time to kind of clean that up and straighten it out. So whatever we decide to do, whether it's more strict enforcement or just enforcement in general, we have the backing of the ordinance. Right now, it's clear that there is a state law that governs that that has concurrent jurisdiction between the traffic tribunal and municipal court. But the fines for that are significantly higher, specifically $85. And I'm personally not a fan of writing $85 parking tickets when traditionally they were 25 or $50 for a parking van during a snowfall. So that's the enforcement part of it. The final part that I just want to mention is October is pedestrian safety month. And it's also the start of the federal fiscal year. So we were just awarded our federal grants for traffic enforcement, safety, which includes speed enforcement, crosswalk enforcement, DUI patrol and a few others. So we're going to take advantage of the October and the support that we get from Rhode Island Department of Transportation and the National Highway Safety Transportation with their advertising to do an awareness and education campaign on parking on sidewalks, crosswalks, and anything else that has to do with pedestrian safety. Go out there and get the warnings out there, make notifications. And gradually, you know, we'll step up enforcement, especially if it's for somebody that we've already spoken to or have issued a warning to cease that behavior, especially in those identified trouble spots.
If I may, I spoke with Chief Knott today and as I said earlier, we're in the process of this update of the whole code of ordinances. So it's an ideal time. I sent Mark a list of areas that I feel I want his opinion on for me to go back to the attorney I'm dealing with in Munich Court. But just to give you an idea of what we're faced with, that we have an ordinance that says it shall be unlawful to park a motor vehicle on any of the town's highways for more than two hours continuously. And it's an offense if you move your car from one place to another. And if you get caught doing it, the fine is $3.
I actually chuckled when you sent that to me, Al, after we talked. It was, I thought, well, maybe we do need to do a little updating, updating, educating. And it's, I didn't realize, Mark, that it was pedestrian safety month. So it so ties together.
And just, there are a number of other issues. I just addressing the parking in view of your discussion. But I sent a lot more to Chief Knott today. As I said, because we're in the middle of it right now and it's the perfect time to try and get this straightened out.
So it's a good thing we're on Zoom because if we were in the town hall after two hours, we'd all have to go out and put our cars somewhere else. It wouldn't work. That'd be a problem. Yes. So, so thank you for looking into that and doing some work and updating. And I'm sure you'll give us an update as you progress. Thank you.
Yes.
Upcoming appointments, Sewer Use Tax Board of Review, one alternate member vacancy with terms to expire 2024, one vacancy with terms to expire 10 2023. Pension Committee, three vacancies with terms to expire 2022, 2023, and 2024. Zoni Board of Review, one vacancy with term to expire 2025, one alternate member with a term to expire 7 2025. Potoxit River Authority, one vacancy with a term to expire 2023. Board of Ten and Affairs, one vacancy with a term to expire 8 2022. West Warwick Housing Authority, one vacancy with a term to expire 11 2025. Arctic Redevelopment Commission, one vacancy with a term to expire 10 1 2025. Westward Public Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy with a term to expire 2 2022, one term to expire 2 2021. Recreation Committee, two vacancies. Public comment, designated portion of town councils, open meeting with citizens to address comments to the town council related to matters affecting pub, public business. Comments will be addressed only to the town council who will take the moderate advisement. When advising, when addressing the town council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested. Member of, members of the town council being the duly elected public body as identified in Rhode Island General Statute 424623 have no obligation to respond to the public's comments.
Before we move on, I just want to touch on a couple of things. Ernie, this is your last, supposedly last council meeting here for West Warwick. I want to thank you for your three years of service with us. I know the council is also supposed to meet. Again, Ernie, I Um, again, Ernie, I, um, I, I want to wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And uh, thank you for all you've done over the last few years. Um, secondly, this council has to schedule a date to appoint the interim town manager. I, I want to confirm, is next Tuesday okay for everybody? That also means that the town hall, who would have a town manager for a few days.
Um, I'm free as of right now, every day next week, um, in the evening.
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday works for me as well.
Monday's a holiday, that's why I'm saying Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday's good.
I'm with me.
Uh, we, we can look at the early, early time that we do usually for these types of meetings, the six o'clock time slot.
Yes, we'll make it six P.
Yeah.
And um, go from there. Mary Ann, also for the next agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had a request from the Business District to put the Phoenix School Year Business District on the agenda to talk about um, issues they are having down there.
Okay.
Any other comment from the council before we move on to the public?
Actually, I would echo, um, Ernie. You know, we've talked about road bonds, we've talked about having capital. And that is squarely on your shoulders, that we're in the financial position that we are. You've done a terrific job as far as that goes. So I don't think, um, I, I don't think many people would have thought three years ago that that was possible. But uh, we, we are in a fairly sound, uh, we still have work to do, but fairly sound fiscal position, um, by and large, because of the work you and Kristen have done. So just thank you.
Thank you. And the, the town is positioned well to move forward, uh, fiscally. Structural changes will benefit the town going forward. So I think there is a, a very bright future for the town of West Warwick. Everyone, as long as everyone works together, uh, which I'm sure will happen. And uh, I think uh, there will be continued improvements along the lines. So thank you very much, and it has been a pleasure working here the last three years. And uh, I as well wish the town and the council uh, much, much success in the upcoming months and years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
I do have a hand up in the audience.
Dave, can I say one thing first?
Go ahead, John.
Um. All right, so, so Tuesday's coming. And we don't have a town manager. So I think we, as a council, we, we need a point person. Um, and we're meeting on Tuesday night, but um, to discuss the interim manager. But in the meantime, prior to getting to that interim position, who, who are we looking at as a point person? Because it has to be, if there's an issue comes up, we could call somebody.
The president could act as a person.
What's that, John?
We could ask, just as, as if, if, yes, the president absolutely could do that. But as, as if Ernie were on vacation, quite honestly, um, he, he has from time to time appointed an acting town manager. And that certainly could be done for a, a few days or a week as well. I know that Chief Verone's done it. I know Chief, Colonel Knott's done it. Mark Corullo's done it. So I, I think that, again, as though Ernie were on vacation, we'd have to have, we'd have that issue as well.
We should treat it as a two-week vacation, because it's, it's going to take time to, to.
Yes.
I mean, when we discuss this Tuesday night, I mean, it's not going to happen Wednesday, so.
No.
I'm sure there's going to be discussion with an interim person. Um, and that's going to take a little bit of time. But I think that, I think the department should know who their go-to person is. So it, Ernie, would you feel comfortable at this point appointing somebody as, um, as an acting manager for a few weeks? Or is that something you'd rather leave up to the council?
Well, again, I, I believe I still would have the authority uh, to do that, uh, in, in my capacity. So I, I'll have to go back and reread the charter. But I, I believe that uh, I would have the ability to do that. I would speak with the solicitor. And if that's possible, and if that's the council's desire, I certainly could do that.
I just think we have to make a decision. We should make it tonight.
Well, why don't we see what, why don't we let Ernie and the solicitor have that discussion? And, and, and then um, we do have a, a couple of days before Ernie actually is, is the, today's Tuesday, and it'll be going on Friday. His last day will be Friday. But I agree with you, Jason, that it is something that, and as I said, just as though Ernie was going on vacation. I don't see that there's much of a distinction there.
I'm guessing Tim is not in the video right now. I feel like we allow, have this session at all. I feel like it may be on the agenda. Not, not to be the Tim of this meeting, but I feel like this is off the spectrum of anything we talk.
I agree that we should, uh.
I think we should save it till Tuesday.
I don't, though. I, I think we, we waited, what, five weeks now?
No, no.
And I think it's, I think it's too long. I think, you know, at this point, you know.
I don't just, I don't, I don't.
We don't have.
Shut the fuck up, Messia.
Oh, Mr. Oh.
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 Bye.
I apologize. I did not know I was on there.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you didn't.
I, I just think if we wait till Tuesday, I don't think it's fair to the employees, because they're going in Tuesday without knowing something. And I think it's up, either make the decision or have Ernie make the decision. But then, if this is done tomorrow, then if Ernie can't make the decision, then what happens?
I don't disagree with anything you said. I just, I just don't know if we're going off the scope where it could be considered an open meetings violation. I don't disagree with anything you're saying.
And the fact is that let Ernie talk to the solicitor. I, I agree with you, Jason, and we do need, but, but we don't know what people's vacation schedules are. We don't have privy to that. So we could not make a decision on a particular individual this evening. So we, we, Ernie certainly is the town manager right now, and he can, he can act in that capacity and, and have that conversation. So, but I agree, it should be done sooner rather than later.
All right, the public comment. I have somebody who raised their hand. I'm allowing them to talk. Just state your name and address for the record.
Derek Reed, sixty-two Andrews Ave, West Ward. All right, so first of all, I think with Tom Woltz, just now, I think he should have known that he was unmuted. Um, he's, you know, that was his opinion, whatever, but I just think he should have known he was unmuted before we just let him sit there idle. That's neither here nor there. First of all, I want to thank, I want to get Ernie's attention. I want to thank him for the service of the town. I want to thank him for trying to make our town a better place, even though he was hit with random roadblocks within the inner workings of his town. But unfortunately, that may never change. But I personally want to thank you, even though I've been tough on you from time to time. And it's unfortunate that you are leaving, but I want to wish you good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
All right, I, I guess some topics we're going to discuss tonight. Um, I have my hand up a few times. Been put down multiple times. That's fine. I'll save it for public comment. But you guys might want to pull up a seat and get a drink. Um, first of all, I want to know if the town manager position is going to get advertised or is it not? Because I think it should already be advertised. No? Okay.
Yeah, well, yes, it will be advertised.
Okay. Is there any long, is there, are there any more individual department reports that come through these council meetings? Or did that go away?
I'm not sure what the question is, Derek.
So there used to be department reports from the department heads on the council meetings. Monthly report.
They were called director's, director's reports.
Right. Jay, did that go away, or do we still do that?
There are department, there are time, there are times when department heads are, yes. And it, it, it's something that um, should be reviewed and will be reviewed with, with any new town manager.
Okay. And then what exactly does discussion action mean on the agenda?
We can discuss it and we can take action on it.
Okay. And why, when I put my hand up, you put it down?
Because it's discussion action for the council.
But you set the president already. You let us speak many times on discussion action. So I think from here on out, you're pretty much obligated to do so. Either that, or you should have never let us talk previously to tonight. There was discussions being done about the playground. And there was a discussion about the chimney. And I put my hand up, and I, I just find it odd that no response, you just put the hand down. But you, in the past, you let us talk, so you've got to pick one or the other. You can't be selective on this. Once you set the president, you set the president. That's the way it is. Okay? Then we're going to get to the playground. First of all, who's running this project? Is the DPW director running this project? Is the assistant DPW director running this project? Is there an architect running the project? Who's running the project?
At this point, I would say the DPW director. Don, I assume that you would agree with that?
I'm running the project.
Okay, so we hired an architect. Are we working off a blueprint? Are we working off what we think we should have to do? Like, why did we hire an architect if there's, was that just to meet the guideline of, we're going to have an architect, but we're not going to have the architect run the job? We're not going to have the architect write up a blueprint? We're just going to say we have an architect?
I've been working with the architect. Uh, we've talked probably at least once a week. He's been out to the site four or five times. He has drawn up several sketches. Uh, he will do the final design on the parking lot. Um, so I don't know what else to tell you. I'm a professional engineer myself, and this is the fifth playground that I've worked on. So I feel pretty confident that I know what I'm doing.
Well, we've been down this road too many times. I'll, I'll make that opinion on a later date. Um, but the bottom line is, if there's an, if you, if Don's working with an architect on this job, then that means I can put in a public recs request when this is all done and see a checklist that the, that the architect signed off on?
I'm not sure what you're asking for on that.
Okay. So you just answered one of my questions. The paving and the grade changes, those are all approved by the architect?
Not yet.
Okay. So you said during the playground discussion that we have a plan in place. So if you have a plan in place, that would be a plan that's approved by the architect. Otherwise, the plan shouldn't be in place. Correct?
No, I can design a parking lot. I'm a professional engineer in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. And I understand grades, and I can turn around and get that project completed without an outside landscape architect.
So why did we hire one?
I don't know why you hired one. That was not me that hired him.
Okay. Now, as far as the rubber membrane goes, in my opinion, that's the way to go. But it's not only good for the pathways, it's also good for the fall zones. It's a cushion for the children to fall on. As we have one, we have this, the entire impossible dream done Matt's style. So you don't have to go all the way to Jamestown to see it. You go right to Warwick. And it's virtually maintenance-free. In other words, that you don't have to do nothing but go in there with a leaf blower every once in a while and blow it clean, if that's what you want to do. So at the end of the day, man-hours versus replacement of mulch versus maintenance of weeds and all that other stuff. As a taxpayer, I'd like to see the rubber membrane going, and then it'd be all said and done. And it's just my opinion. You can take it for what it's worth, but like I said, I have experience with the rubber membrane. I watched it go in, know how it goes in. And I know how it has stood up for the past probably fifteen or twenty years. Um, so in my opinion, the rubber membrane is definitely the way to go for the bottom-line number going forward. Um, that's all I got for the playground. The other thing I got is, we had a fire, forty-one Industrial Lane. Coincidentally, on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, the town manager wrote a report about this building on Industrial Lane. I'd like to ask the council if they know if anything's been done since May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, to go along with that report that was put out. Take that as a no.
I, I, Derek, I, I don't have an answer for you. Um, I, I will tell you that I.
Counselor, I don't want to cut you off, but uh, I do think Fire Chief Verone has the answers to that.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I, I will, I will talk to Chief Verone and we will, we will ask, we as a council, I believe, it would be who of us to find out what happened there, if there are, all the permits that are needed are in place at, in forty-one Industrial Lane, and what, if anything, we need to do to make sure everything's in compliance.
So, um, yes, everything is in compliance there. Um, I'm not sure. I do not have a copy of the manager's uh, letter of May of two thousand eighteen.
Chief, I'll make you a copy.
All right, thank you. Um, I, I do have a timeline of the event. I know that there was a, um, when the CO was issued, the fire department had not inspected, uh, the building. We were made aware of, uh, that lap. We did go and inspect the building. We made some recommendations. Those recommendations were picked up and completed. And um, and that was in February of two thousand eighteen. So um, the building was brought to code at that time. Positive thing, um, you know, they did put in, um, some separation between, there's five different occupancies there, and they, they built, um, separation between each of the occupancies and they're fire-rated. So the fire that we had actually burnt itself out. It, it, um, starved itself from oxygen because of the way the building was built. So the building was built correctly, or else, you know, that fire would have spread to the other occupancies and lost the whole building, um, you know, if it had not been built as well as it was. So the building did, um, contain the fire as it was designed to do.
All right, so then, I know it's a nine-thousand-square-foot building. But if you, if you go into the, the file at the town hall, it's written in the town hall, and it's also permitted in the town hall. It's a storage warehouse, meaning there's no individual base. There, there's also nothing in there about individual commercial base, commercial rental base with individual utilities. All right? So would that be instead, I'm pretty sure, and you know better than I do, that this building should at minimum have fire alarms, not just COs, correct?
It, um, does not, for the size of the building and the occupancy that was listed, it was, it was not required to have it. And the separation was part of that, the five separate areas was part of that.
So according to. So according to town documentation and all the stuff that I got in the past. There's gotta, I mean, there's gotta be some sort of a fire alarm system's gotta be installed when you are renting to auto mechanic. Working with cars and equipment and oil, gas, and.
Right, so, uh, he's not renting, for, to the best of my knowledge, he's not renting to a business. He, he rented to an individual who is working on his own vehicle.
There is, there is seven, there are seven businesses there. This is what I mean, the town needs to really understand that there's a real big problem down there, and they, they've ignored it for so long. And now, it's time that we get. Our, you-know-what together, and go down there and make sure it's legal. Because, I'm telling you, if you're renting to somebody with. Business where they're working on vehicles, that they're storing vehicles, you, you, you can't tell me that, you, you don't need a fire alarm. God forbid that cargo, equipment goes up in smoke, how is anybody gonna know?
So again, it, it was contained to that one unit, and, um, and the building worked just as it was designed to.
So.
Can I, can I ask a question with this?
Sure, well, who are you asking?
It's just for, I don't know, um, it's, it's just for clarification, um, chief, it's probably not you. But, um, if we're. If we're giving a permit to, to a storage unit. To me, storage is, and I could be wrong, I don't know, a storage is, if you want to store your boat for the winter. Or you want to store a motorcycle or a car, um, kind of like you'd have, um. Like you store, I don't know, like you buy the, the, the little rental units that, um, they have this, like on storage wars, kind of. But there's no, but there's no activity in there. Is, so I guess the question is, is, if you store a car, for, you know, for example. You store it, obviously, it's, it's your unit, you're paying for it, but are you allowed to go and, and work on a car? Or even change the oil at that point, I, I mean, what? And I don't know the answer, and I don't, chief, you may not be the one that can answer this, it might be the building official. I, I don't know, but I think, I think I'd like some clarification as to what, can, not just at this place, at, uh. Where the fire was, but, but for all the storage units, I mean, what, what does storage mean? This way, this doesn't happen, and, and we have little roadie storage, you know, what, what should be allowed there, or what can't?
Okay, well, um. I will get you the answers to that, okay? I, I understand your, your question, um, but I do not, um, you know. It's, it's my understanding that if he rents the, um, facility, um, to, to someone. You know, that they, they still don't need a, a, a smoke detector, or, or an alarm system in there.
Well, chief, I, I like.
The general size.
Chief, I like you, I, I, matter of fact, I, I want to request that you look into the type of businesses that are renting over there. And then I would like you to, to maybe get me a, a companion after that.
Yeah. Originally, just wanted to follow up on one other thing, and that is that, um, you know, we, we can't go out and inspect every single, um. Business that's out there, you know, uh, the mechanism, the structural process that's in place is what, when somebody operates a business, they. Get a business license, they submit that to the clerk's office, the clerk notifies the fire department, and then the fire department would go and inspect that. Uh, if someone operates a business and doesn't have a business license, there's no way for us to know that that business is, is there. Okay?
That makes sense.
I, I would agree with that too, chief, that, that, but, but given the, given the high profile of this particular location, and I hate to say that, but that's a reality. We probably should do our due diligence and make sure we know what's there, and make sure licenses are up to date, and everything's legal, and everything's all. I, I mean, that's the reality of it, we've been dealing with it for a while. You, you know, I, I, I just heard May of eighteen report, which I, I did at one point get a copy of, I wasn't on the council. And you said everything was up to date for February.
Yes.
So.
We, we went out there February first, two thousand eighteen, and, uh, everything was to code at that point.
And my guess is that, um, we've probably overstepped our, um, even though it's public comment discussion. It's not on the agenda, these things aren't on the agenda, that we're getting very specific in things. So, um, perhaps you get the gist of it and, and, um, a continuation of, of, um, yeah.
We can, uh, have the Fire Marshal's office go out and, uh, look at the other occupancies there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Hearing none?
Nope, sorry, Jason, I'll second that, how's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
I shut my mouth now.